Maybe, maybe after Christmas. Very tense. Supposedly.
See my whole. Oh. Leah.
What? For all, for all.
So could you prepare office card for me?
Yes. Yeah, it's out in the key.
So when we start, first time we get is it. Are there two to show something? Where? Please then. Really know what the single stage.
Oh man, that topic is wild.
Each of us doing a question one. Okay, so we're gonna wrap up any questions?
She has been asking, you have some votes going to her too.
She got the.
Here's the question.
Yeah, question two. Yeah, question. That need. No. Yeah. That's the. Hmm. Okay. Put down.
Alright, so we can go ahead and call this meeting to order since we do have a forum here at 6:00 PM. And we could, um. I'll stand for the pleasurable, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I ask that everybody in chairs either turn their cell phones off or turn them on silent. You'll take no call, please, city manager.
Here's your, who's coming up? Councilmember Williams, Reed, Jackson.
Here.
Lawler, Lanu.
Here.
And Mayor Stanger.
Here.
So at this time, we will go ahead and ask that Gwen and Devon.
Yep.
Gwen here. Hi Gwen. Ask if you two would like to go into our city clerk's office. I'm making sure so we can. So right across the hall. Yvonne will take you over. Make sure you get situated. Got my. So you have three candidates present, you have five to fill the precinct six seat. Councilwoman Lawler is set for the process here. So make sure you're setting right now. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and ask Andrew French to come on up and stand to the microphone. Oh, and then everybody could make sure that your microphones are on. Make sure that the green light is on in front of you. So thank you for being here, Mr. French. We are going to go ahead and ask questions of you. We all have his application in front of us. So hopefully you have the time to go through all of the applications. So I'm gonna go ahead and start off with the first question and then I will go to my left to councilwoman Reed for the second one, sorry. Councilman Williams for the second question. And city manager, just made remind me that responses should be held about more than two minutes. Okay?
You're gonna be too well.
The three hundred straight.
What a time warp.
Alright, so Mr. French.
Sure.
What would you like us and the precinct six residents to know about you and your desire to serve?
Sure.
So, um, I think the folks in precinct six already know who I am, having served two terms ending in 2018. Many of them already know a great deal about who I am and what I hope to accomplish as not the city council, but for the folks present. I agreed to apply for this position again at the behest of a significant number of my precinct council people on the redistricting map. And so what I hope to bring is a return to leadership in the community as I used to have. With a fair mind, an open mind, with an understanding of who I am as a person now and where we are as a community now. Recognizing that there are implicit biases and a respect for those implicit biases and a desire to, to recognize those and to try to work past them to the betterment of our community as a whole. It's a different time from 2018 and it's time for all of us as a community to sort of recognize that those changing times and to work with them. But I will also bring eight years of experience on the city council, working with each and every one of you who was on the council during those times. Working to bring about the change that needs to happen and now yet to benefit each precinct as I did when I was a council member before. There are members of this council to my right who have seen the work that I did previously to bring about some of that change that improved their precincts as well as mine.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams, I may be questioning.
Okay.
Councilwoman, you're kind of.
He showed up after you were given it.
What is your level of involvement in the community currently?
Currently, so I am active, I'm active in my church. I'm, uh, I'll be an first Methodist. I am chair of the staff parish relations committee. I'm a local philanthropist, having supported a great many efforts in the community and I'm a listener. And so I listen to people in my precinct just because I'm a neighborly guy and outspoken, willing to, to speak out for, for people generally. And so that's my level of involvement at the moment, so.
Councilwoman, please describe any public service experience you had.
Well, so to reiterate, eight years, well, three years on the planning commission from 2008, nine, and 10, and then transitioning to elected office as city councilperson, ran an election and was defeated by Joe Domingo in 2012 to be mayor, and then was reelected in 2014. My job at Albion College at the time changed and so it became necessary for me to not seek reelection. There was an obvious sort of conflict of interest there, that the needs of the college and my new position as a fundraiser could be construed as in conflict with the, with what was going on in the city. So I stepped down as a city councilperson to take on that additional leadership. As you might remember, in those days, I was also a Build Albion Americor Vista coordinator. Councilwoman Lanu was a member of that team back in 2016, 17. So, um, those sorts of fit roles sort of could be construed to be in conflict. So, but that was my level of involvement then and so now it's less since I left the college.
Councilwoman, remember, please. Okay, what motivates you and what does success look like to you?
So, that's a big question. What motivates me is, is service, right? The idea that, that we as individual citizens can make our society better by being engaged, by listening to the needs of others and putting needs of others ahead of oneself interests. Success looks like a council that communicates better than it has in the past, that it listens to each other and together finds projects that, that around which common ground can be built. And so for success for me is a reduction in the stress of the council, a reduction in the divisiveness in the council that brings cooperation and collaboration back and gets rid of some of the negativity that seems to pervade the council and pervaded the council when I was on council. I try to work to find common ground so that we all can feel good about the job that we're doing and we are less adversarial and more collaborative.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that and, and having worked with you, I know that you've worked through a number of challenging situations in your roles of leadership. Before asking the specific questions on here, I, I did want to highlight that you mentioned in your application that this seat has opened due to redistricting. And I was concerned with reading that because that's not why this seat was open. Councilmember Williams couldn't serve until the end of his term.
That's correct.
So I, I felt that that was something that needed clarification. So my question is, what are the positive things that you feel you would bring to the table to help move out there forward? Some specific things that you would focus on?
Sure, so the first is to reengage myself with all of you. What are, there was strategic planning, I think, that was going on. So we, to understand what the vision and mission is in the next six months for this council and what it, what it needs. And what can precinct six representation bring to that? I have not signed up for another four years and I've signed up for six months. And whether I choose to seek election in November will depend entirely on my experiences over the next six months. If I feel like the council wants to work together better and that we can agree on some things and get the city moving, then certainly I will consider running again. But for now, it, my, my applying is to represent precinct six. So what are the needs? Victory Park is on a list of things that need doing. The trail which goes through precinct six quite extensively needs work. So what are those things that need to, to happen to help those projects? So what, the streets in precinct six in comparison to all others are in just fine shape. There is no immediate need for work in the streets and roads and sidewalks because it's in, they're in pretty good shape. Because, let's be honest, past support for precinct six has been high at the expense of others. So let's work together to get some things done in other precincts. Because I think people in precinct six recognize that we as a city as a whole are only as good as our, our weakest precinct in terms of infrastructure. So what are those things? Is it precinct one and the bridge that needs to happen on Albion Road? Or is that precinct two? What are the things going on at McIntosh Park that need, that need city support? And can I get myself behind those things? So those are, you know, just being a representative for precinct six because precinct six does care about what happens in the city. And I want to be a positive person.
Thank you.
What is one thing you feel you are capable of doing to help this council move forward?
So, um, I was mayor pro temp for a term. I think I've worked with a bunch of you on the council already on projects, whether it be working with land precinct for at the Holland Park project. We did a tremendous amount of work together. I look forward to continuing that. Markola, you working with, with Washington Garden. What was that gonna become of that? I helped with you, I helped onboard you as a councilperson. And so I, I feel that we can continue to work well together. Donovan, I worked with your predecessor, Maurice Barnes. And while he was a volatile character, he, his heart was in the right place and brought about some things in precinct one. So I think I can bring that collegiality and that collaboration spirit. And, and I hope that people have experienced that already with me, so it's not something new or different. I want to be less divisive than my predecessor. But I also want to be able to stand up for what's right. So I'm not gonna be a pushover, but I'm also gonna listen a lot. I've learned a lot about myself in the last 40 years. Leaving Albion College employment has certainly made me more relaxed. The pressures of that job, even before Dr. Johnson's arrival and departure under Maury Kinsler, I was moved in lots of different places that didn't necessarily make it the best place to be employed. So I made mistakes while there, happy to be in a position. So I think that I can bring that sort of hopefully calm and collaborative spirit to the council. Because you guys all have collaborated together already. I think adding a sixth person to be part of that collaborative effort will be.
So what will you do to bring the city council together?
What would I want?
What would you do to bring the city council together?
Well, so I didn't, I didn't get a chance to be participating in the strategic plan and our training over the last four years. But I think that, um, helping, helping identify what are the things that we can agree on first in the next six months? What are the things that we can agree on that we as a city council can do to support our staff in doing their job to the best of their ability? Is it providing resources for hiring staff to help with streets and cleanup or what have you? Is it helping our city manager with grant proposals and, and ideas to help her do her job better? What is it that we can do to help our city attorney move forward on projects? Whether it's finding opportunities for, for grants or litigation or what have you? What is it that June needs to do her job better? What is it that Scott Kip and our Public Safety Office need to do their job better? Council's role, I think, is to help our staff do their job better. It is not to do their job, but to do their job better. And how do we do that? And I'm sure we can come together as a citizen person council and find those things that we can have immediate success and support so that we can show our city that we can do our job and not be divisive and not get into politics or the campaigning or the rhetoric that has divided this council in the past. There are things that we can agree on, let's find them and do that and do them well.
Great.
What do you identify as the top three priorities for the city?
Well, if, if Albion is like most cities, we had probably had staffing issues that need to be addressed. How do we hire the best and most competent and most qualified staff members to do the job of the city? Right? So I know that we didn't have as many people plowing roads last winter. I know that because in my community, we didn't get plowed until the day after the snowstorm. And yeah, we only had one big one this year, but it took a couple of days for my road to get plowed. Well, that just tells me we don't have enough people plowing roads. Does that mean we probably don't have enough people on the street crew to do the jobs that we need doing? So that would be a first priority. We need to figure out a way to help Haley and her staff and DPW chief do their job better. That's priority one. If you think about what citizens want, they want better streets, better roads, and to be left alone. But we also have a millage coming up. So how do we as a council support the education of our citizens to make that millage work? Right? We don't want to ramrod those sorts of things down our throat. We don't want it to get defeated. So how do we rally and be transparent and communicative to our constituents about what that millage is gonna pay for? And what is the immediate benefit to John Q. Public Citizen in their community? How is that gonna help us with that millage? So we have to come up with a plan to help our staff sort of articulate that and get behind it and, and be present at rallies and things that engage our citizens in educating in the need for this particular millage. So that's priority two. And priority three is let's make a council meeting less divisive. So people will want to turn in and tune in and participate in the democracy that we have in the city. Rather than, you know, did you see the latest on YouTube and the negativity that comes with that? Let's fix that first. Because we are, our public image and the respect of council is a function of our public image. And our public image is shaped by how we behave. So how can we behave better? Is it, do we need to inform our council members in advance of a meeting? Does it mean we had to have meetings, you know, these special sessions where we can educate our council without making a decision? Where we can ask those questions? Can we be engaged? And can we engage our citizens in all of that process? So that's the third.
Why are you the best, why are you the best person to represent residents of precinct six on the city council?
So, um, I'm not sure that I am. What I bring is experience. And if that's what the council wants to represent precinct six, then that's what they'll get. My two other applicants don't have experience in Albion on the city council. And maybe that's what you're looking for, someone who's new and fresh ideas and, and a blank slate that you can help transition into this leadership role. And, and I'm fine with that. But what I bring is experience. Eight years of elected office, three campaigns, a comfort with the staff that are present and a comfort with the council that are present. That's it.
Well, Mr. French, thank you for being here. You're the timer, you're gonna.
Yep, I get it.
And bring in the next candidate. Alright, so if you want to follow Yvonne, I'm open.
So I have one question. So will a decision be made in advance of the council meeting in two weeks?
Actually, this is a meeting tonight.
You went, okay. And is that?
Nope.
No, it's not that. The next meeting.
Oh, okay.
So you'll make a decision at the next meeting or you'll make a decision tonight at the council?
It'll be at the, um, May 16th meeting.
And it, so, but we will be, okay, so they'll make the decision at that meeting, but that person doesn't need to be at the 16th meeting? Or will they then have to complete? I'm just trying to figure out time for you though, right? Because the 16th is the 16th and that's two weeks from now, so.
If the person selected at the meeting will get sworn in at that meeting.
Okay, that's all I needed tonight? Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Garcia, how are you? That's good. So we are gonna take the opportunity to ask some questions of you. So first, we want to thank you for submitting the application. You all have a chance to review that information. So we are going to ask you the exact same questions that we asked of Mr. French before. Okay. So what would you like us and the precinct six residents to know about you and your desire to serve?
Well, I'm new to the community. We just bought a house two months ago, right here, just a couple of blocks away. And we decided even before we purchased it that we really like Albion. My son lives, has lived in the vicinity, but not in the city for like the last five years. And he just loves the way Albion seems to be coming, making a comeback and so glad. And it's starting to get kind of exciting. We wanted to be part of it and we wanted to be part of the community instead of just buying a house and living here and keeping to ourselves. We wanted to get to know people. We wanted to get to know the pulse of what's going on in the community and be a part of it. Make Albion grow like it has been. It looks to me like it's really starting to come together a little bit later. So we just want to be part of it. That's okay. That's all, please?
Yes. What is your level of involvement in the community?
I just got here. So this is my, this is my level right here. I was looking on the website just to see what was going on and I saw that and I'm like, wait, that's in the district I live in. What a way to get involved, right? I'm gonna wait up, put my feet down right now. Uh, can you just please describe any public service experience you had? Well, I, I've door knocked on campaigns and I, you know, done, you know, phone calls and things like that for, for, you know, started to get involved, getting petitions signed for things. So that's pretty much, I mean, as far as, you know, the community.
What motivates you and what does success look like to you?
Thank you for asking. What motivates me is seeing success, not just for myself, but for everybody. And as I walk around this community and I see new stores opening and I walk in and I see the people and, you know, people being happy, that, that really motivates me. I just, I, I just love that whole, the whole idea. I work seasonally doing taxes and things like that and it motivates me to help people to, to resolve the problems to set things up so it'll be better in the future. So in different jobs that I've had, it's like, it's always nice to see other people succeed and, and drive a lot of happiness out of it.
Thank you so much.
I am curious about your public service experiences. Whose campaigns do you have support?
I was, um, years ago, let's see. I'm trying, it, it was, um, I can't remember her name.
Was it a statewide?
No, it was, it was a county one.
Okay, okay, I was just curious to learn more.
Yeah, yeah. And the thing of it is, I hate to say this, but I started to campaign for her and then I just didn't agree with something I saw on her commercials and so I backed off of it. And I, I tend to be not partisan. I, you know, I've tried, tried to kind of get involved in different campaigns and then I just, it's like both sides have positive, both sides a challenge, you know, so it just depends on the person.
Yeah. Yes, sir, because this is a nonpartisan, also I, I just wanted to ask that. And my question is, what are the positive things that you feel you would bring to the table to help move out there forward?
I've had a lot of experience in advertising and sales and, um, I, I ran my own business for a while, things like that. So that's why my second option on it was, was downtown development. I thought maybe I could bring some, some thoughts to that. I worked for radio stations for like seven years, selling advertising and trying to help people build their business. And then I did Yellow Pages for a while, which wasn't as, wasn't marketing as much, but, but, but I, and I did sales for a lot of different, different types of companies and stuff, so.
Thank you. What is one thing you feel you are capable of doing to help this council move forward?
Well, first I want to listen. Because I don't feel like I have all the answers. But if I listen to what the goals of the council are and, and become aware of what the direction is, then I might be able to see where I can step in and move things forward. I don't really think I have an agenda where I can fix things. So at least not yet, not till I, not till I know what needs to be done and where I can help.
What will you do to bring the city council together?
I think it's all about relationships and, you know, getting to know people and cooperating with each other.
Okay, um, what do you identify as the top three priorities for the city?
Getting rid of empty buildings, I'm sure is one of the things. Because I, I see anything filled up now, but I'm sure that's one of the priorities. I, we were really happy when we started our garbage service and it was so inexpensive. And we, we realized that the reason was is because the city wanted to clean up the community and make it easier for people to clean their yards up and things of that nature. We were missing and we were talking about, we're like, wow, that's really pretty cool. Because we think that the city had something to do with it being so inexpensive so that you you know, those types of things can happen. Um, so the visual and also bringing more events to the town. I mean, festival works is a nice option. Uh, some of the concerts that go on are, I think, are real positive things. So if there were more events going on in the city, I think that would help move it forward as well. I mean, it's a college town, it should be happening, you know?
Why are you the best person, why do you think you're the best person? Or do you think you're the best person to represent residents in precinct six?
Well, since I don't know my competition, I don't know if I know that. Quite honestly, I just know I would find I'll be here. I do have a lot of time because I only work seasonally and full, so I, you know, I don't have to work all year round. And uh, and I would really be interested in getting to know everybody and getting to, and I would like to find out whatever those opinions are and just get to know the whole community, well, especially my district. But um, and and see how everybody can pull together and help grow the community.
Good. So those are all the questions that we have for you, Ms. Garcia. Um, any last statements?
No, I'm just really excited to be here, whether you choose me or choose the other gal or whatever you choose. I'm happy to be part of this community. I want to start attending the meetings and seeing how I can help either way.
Awesome. Well, we appreciate that. Okay, so we're gonna have you switch out. You go back with Yvonne.
Okay.
And then we will bring in our last person.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Welcome, Ms. May. Am I pronouncing my name correctly? Yeah, you are. Okay. Awesome. Well, first of all, we want to thank you for submitting your application and for coming in to make people to know you a little bit better. Um, we are going to go around and ask you questions, train questions that we ask of the other two candidates. Um, and so I'm going to start off with a question of what would you like us and the precinct six residents to know about you and your desire to serve?
I guess that at the heart, uh, the heart of it all is that I really care about people. And I put people, other people first when I make decisions. That might be it.
Okay, um, what is your level of involvement in the community?
So I work for a nonprofit in town, Star Common. And I'm still a little bit newish to the community, so I'm still learning how I can be more involved too.
Okay, uh, please describe any public service experience that you have.
So other than with my work in a nonprofit, I've also worked for, interned for in law school, I interned for a legal services office. So that's um legal services that are offered to low-income individuals. And then I am also a longtime member of the American Legion Auxiliary, not in Albion, but um where I've lived previously. So I've done a lot of community service um in those organizations.
What motivates you? What does success look like to you?
That's a tough one. I guess success looks like for me, personal success looks like um making sure that I'm providing for others. And then, sorry, what was the first part of the question?
What motivates you?
Motivates me. It's gonna sound like a sad answer, but really making leaving everywhere I go a better place than I found it, whether it be my work, my employer, or really anywhere. I try not to do any harm anywhere and make it better than I found it.
Thank you, yes, thank you. Um, so I, I've been asking everybody an extra question just because I'm concerned about everyone's application themselves. And I notice um we were missing the second reference. Is that something that you could submit?
Oh, yeah, I can submit one.
Okay, thank you. Um, my question is, what positive things do you feel you bring to the table to help move Albion forward?
Um, I think I'm very attentive to detail and I'm also very um open-minded and receptive to new information. So I don't um, I don't come in expecting to know all the information before I uh make any decisions.
What is one thing you feel you are capable of doing to help this council move forward?
I think I am really able to help find solutions. I'm um admittedly a really good problem solver and I'm really good at um kind of finding middle ground with people and um that's what I'm looking for. I just lost it. But finding a compromise. I'm really good at compromising. I'm really good at um kind of bringing up new ideas.
Um, what will you do to bring the city council together?
Well, I guess I really have to get to know everything first. But I guess try to again, find a middle ground with everybody and kind of see maybe there's something that's being miscommunicated or maybe just something that can be communicated more efficiently, different people together.
Okay, um. What do you identify as the top three priorities for the city?
I guess keep um the economic growth going, um advancing equity and let's see, what's the last one? Man, I got my two out so fast. And um promoting safety.
I like the way you make the noise when you give your answer. Of course, since I do that too.
Yeah.
Why are you, why, why are you the best person to represent the residents of precinct six?
I think I bring a new perspective to a lot of things, but I'm also willing to reach out to others in precinct six to see what their thoughts are as well. To make sure that their, their um best interests are being represented.
Do you have any last statements that you would like to leave us?
I don't think so.
Okay, so um you are going to be asked to come back to our next meeting. Uh, we're gonna take some time to digest what we heard from the candidates. And at the next meeting is where we will make a decision and that person will get sworn in.
Okay.
So you are more than welcome to stay. But this is kind of like the end of your interview.
And then how would you like you to submit the last reference?
Maybe you will excuse me for a comment.
Okay, awesome. I will do that.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
So Ms. Garcia, you are free to go. We are going to make our decision at the next council meeting. So it's not going to be next month, but it's going to be the month following. And then that person that we decide on will get sworn in, then start work on that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so you are free to go if you'd like, or you can definitely stay. You're more than welcome. Alright, so this is where we open up um more for public permits. So if anybody in the chambers would like to stand, address council, that you state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Rick Lang. I live in the 810 Haven Road. I think everybody seeking to serve on the council should be recognized for the public spirit. But I think one applicant is the clear choice for the point of the precinct six council representative. Andy French is temperate, independent, fair, principled, and he's the only applicant who has previously been elected to represent precinct six. And I think that means a lot. He could also start in because of his experience as a contributing member of the council right away and not have to work that long. I think that would be an important benefit. So I can only speak for myself. But I feel certain that many people in precinct six would agree with me when I say, please appoint the applicant who is best for precinct six in the city of Albion, Andy French.
We have some chambers, like standing on speed. Do you have anybody?
Yanni?
For yours.
Okay, I geared back to Superior Street. Um, two things. I just wanted to thank the council for um conducting this in an efficient, orderly way. Um, and then also I wanted to, I don't, I don't know how the questions were uh chosen. But one of the things that I um wish I had have heard is uh I know the city has established a um equity task force that's really looking at, you know, in the the wake of the George Floyd, Black Lives Matters um uh demonstrations and in terms of just a a a broader concern about um economic equity in the community, especially around how development is taking place. Um, I think that's something that would have been helpful to hear the candidates describe, you know, what does an equitable Albion look like? Um, and what have they done to either further or detract from that? The other thing I would say is precinct six is pretty unique because um in terms of the number of active voters, it actually traditionally has had the the least number of active voters because a very large contingent of the population in that precinct are college students who normally have not voted. Um, so I I think that that's something that also would have been helpful to know. It's like how they would um seek to communicate with and represent the interests of what might be actually the larger demographic in that precinct, which is the the student body at Albion College. So um, thank you all for your service and thank you for this time.
Do we have any council other candidates? Alright, so I think we're gonna save our city manager for the regular session. So I will go ahead and, well, we have a motion to adjourn. I'll move second. Alright, so I will go, um. So you said, we have to take a call. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yeah.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenou?
Yes.
And Mary Stanley?
Yes.
Study session adjourns, six forty-one PM. And we will.